This and then we can have some public comment. So for informational purposes, the executive session that we just entered into was on account of a lawsuit we've been served by Comcast because of the new legislation, which allows customers to have à la carte service. That is, that customers would be able to choose the programming that they want by specific channels. Comcast doesn't want to give this service and they are suing the state of Maine and fifteen municipalities, including us. And there will be a hearing concerning this lawsuit on November first. In consultation with our attorney, we are working also with the town of Kittery, sharing our attorney, and we are going to ask her to file a motion to dismiss the case. And we are hoping that the judge will see that, the case against the municipalities and let the state of Maine. The attorney general of the state is planning to defend the motion, but there is no reason for the towns to enter into this dispute. We're asking, we're going to be asking them to dismiss the suits against the towns.
We asked Alec if we could just ignore. And she said, no, because we could end up with a judgment against us. So we have to at least try to get it dismissed. What that accomplishes is takes us out of the direct line of fire anyway.
Do we know what committee in Augusta handled this law change?
No, not specifically.
We just know it's LB 832.
I think, as I said, we should contact LB's and Jay.
Yeah, I don't remember all of the towns that were served. We were, obviously, Kittery, Brunswick was among them.
Brunswick, Freeport, towns in York County and towns in Saginaw County.
Yeah.
Just Cumberland.
Our neighbors, Fifth Street was also served.
Just a small portion of Cumberland.
Because Comcast is just in this area.
Yeah. So is any of their customers in the state of Maine.
Do we know what the state of Maine plans on doing in Augusta? They must have known this was coming.
Yes, and I think they're planning on fighting it.
My personal opinion is I would probably switch back to Comcast if I could choose the programming that I got. Because I don't need fourteen thousand shopping channels. I don't shop on TV. I don't barely shop at all.
I think it's a town problem.
Because we have a contract with Comcast and they're afraid that we are going to, because we have this contract and we have this, and we have now this legislation, that we're going to say amend our contract so that we can get à la carte service. So if you wanted, you could just have NESN or ESPN and skip all the other things. Which I would do. I know. I think it would be a very popular move.
So the town of West Bath had a guarantee or something that they would use that service?
Yes, yeah, we have a franchise.
But why didn't we even get involved with it?
Well, because when cable was coming through, when, back in the last century, when cable was being instituted, all the towns had to sign up for somebody. And I don't remember, I probably wasn't actually living in town, just coming home for some visits.
And we have to, we have to continue the relationship with it because of the people that still do have whatever.
How long is our contract for now?
I'm not sure. I have to.
It was five years.
I think it was five years.
Yeah, I'm not sure when it started.
We just renewed it.
That's what I thought, last year, wasn't it?
I think so.
Yeah, this year, I think.
It was recent.
Let's hope it works out quickly.
So this is the thanks we get for being loyal customers.
A lot of people's got their cable and everything through it now.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a real.
People have both television and internet service through them.
And some still have phone.
And it's a nice internet service.
Yeah, it's good. It was good internet service. I didn't like the programming that was being offered. I switched years ago. I would switch back if I could get my menu. But obviously, they don't want to offer that to me. Shall we move to business?
Yeah.
Steve, is Goodger here? What'd you get to report?
Okay, well, as you can see, we did get the Fosse Point Road ditched and paved. We went over budget, of course, on the paving. We had a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars to work with, and that was also put two hundred ton on the King's Point Road. And Crook's bill was a hundred and forty-six. Which isn't far off, but it's off, and there's nothing that we could really do about it. It's an estimate that he gave us. The road took more hot top than he expected. So I basically would like to take another sixteen thousand and do the King's Point Road this year the same way. We have money there. We can move it around and do it so we can complete what we wanted to originally. And I told him if we did do it, we had to stick with that number, whether you cut it short or what. So that's all. We still got shimmin' left to do on the Fosse Point Road. We're not shimmin', but the signs, the shoulders, that we need to get filled in. I don't know if you want to put that out, to cut it, or put it off the bid or what. I'm not sure the cost ever it would be. They put, it's really deep in places up top. The road was really way out of whack, so it's gonna take some, some ground.
What, what, what do you estimate it might be?
I'm not sure. I wish I had those numbers for you. I just, I got my budget numbers here, and I tried to go through them, and I remember you guys were giving me like thirty thousand dollars to work with, so I don't know exactly what that number is. I'll get them to you, and then I can tell you what, if we need extra or not on that part. We actually got out of it cheaper than they thought on the ditching part.
And you're hoping to have this done this fall?
Oh, yeah, everything, that'd be all, all wrapped up there. And actually, Caroline's gonna call it, get her a straight man, I feel, strip, strip striker man. What do you call that?
Stripper. We're gonna call it a striper. The Little Rock Stripe.
In Fosse Point.
Yeah, so we gotta do the Fosse Point Road and do that small section on the Little Rock Road.
Act as paid, right?
Little Rock's paid. So, and then I got a phone call also from a lady that was had concerns on the Sabino Road. This is the lady that we need to get in contact with and have a meeting for approved. This is actually the one that where we're gonna put that temporary road. This is the lady, but it's not the other person. So she got the shop thing, explained to me that she was the one that owned it. She liked being a mom.
Okay.
She was very nice about it. She wanted to do whatever. So that goes to whatever. This came up on the, just on your place there.
Bridge Point.
Bridge Point, on the hill.
What is it?
Hole in the road. Bridge Point?
Yes.
So this, this is a person looking at a hole in the road.
Why does this person have this big nose in there?
Because I told him to stick his eye to that trail, how deep it was, and he said, no way. So he was trying to see to make sure there weren't nothing in there. That's my son. I won't stick my eye on you, so.
What, how deep is it?
It's fairly deep. It's, I filled, what I did, I went and plopped in thirty rocks and filled it up. So it didn't clash and something, because the way it was, if somebody hit it right with a tire, they'll get rid of the whole tire. What's causing it? I don't know. I'd like to get down there next rainstorm, supposed to get something like, and see if there's actually water running down through there.
Where, where is it?
It's great. You know, with the culvert, goes across the road and then just starts to melt in the road.
By the pond?
Just up around from the pond. The top, in the middle of the hill, to your right.
Yeah, it's, it's underground water that's causing that. Well, it may be the spring and may be the runoff. I don't know.
Well, I couldn't see the runoff. A spring would make sense. If that's the case, we should cut it open and put a piece of underdrain pipe in there and run it over to the ditch.
That ditching system that you, you put in there, it moves a lot, a lot.
Yeah. So there's a couple ways we can approach this. We can just go ahead and get it done. Another suggestion, I think we get that liquid concrete and fill the hole and plug out whatever is going, but nothing's saying it ain't gonna pop up somewhere else if it's a, if it has no place to go, it's gonna kind of go somewhere. So I think we should be cutting the road open and put a little underdrain in there and see if we can find a boat.
Sound good.
Probably is what we should do.
And it's basically, it's an emergency job.
It's a what?
It's, it should be in a category of emergency job. It's making the throughway and, should be getting done sooner than later. Basically what I'm saying, like, right now, before somebody loses.
Before someone's hurt?
It's a little motion on that.
You can go like, you can see where I filled it full of rocks this afternoon.
Probably with your motion.
I think, I think if the road manager's saying that it's emergency, it's an emergency.
He's got money. We've already voted on that.
Yeah. You're.
And really, you have discretion over how you move funds around.
Yeah, yeah.
It's nice to know what you're up to, but.
That's why I'm here.
Yeah.
And letting you know that's, you know, that's a product, all of a sudden you see us working down there, you're gonna probably wonder why, so that's.
Well, because there's a hole in the road and we, it's, it's big enough for something to live in.
I, we hired some other contractors and do some other work down there in the town. I think we got hit pretty hard with payments, so I gotta be more careful and try to get, help and equip to get things done. That's all I really wanna say on that.
Just to be aware of it.
I think we need, I, okay, how pressing the job is, if I ask somebody to do something, I need a figure first because the figure was enough. There was way more than I had planned and I like it, so. That's it. Lesson learned.
Yeah.
Your idea that we talked about earlier about having some rates that you can consider ahead of.
And that's always a good idea. The town of West Bath, they called me and they got rates for like my hander, rates for my excavator, and rates for my dump truck. So if they need me, and I says, okay, now I'll do it. They know what it's gonna cost.
Yeah.
So I say we go, the three contractors in the town, or four, how many we have, and they all wanna give a rate thing, so I can go, if we get an emergency job, I can walk in these little rates.
Yeah.
That I can expect to be charged for.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Because I get charged twenty-five hundred dollars for an excavator that has, almost twice.
Yeah, I, I think draw, draw up a schedule and.
Yeah, so what I think we should do is put out in the paper, contractors interested in doing work in the town of West Bath, and say, okay, we want a price for a loader. And that, we're there. You get a price for a loader, you hire the guy to come in and pile up your own sand. That's what you better pay him. The game, and all of a sudden, I'm gonna, you know.
And I think we should also just let a local guy to know about it too, as well as.
Well, I think we ought to get a price from these people and use that price, because over there, we know, they give us a bill, and I say, well, what happened here, you know? This is what you give me for a price, so that's what we expected to pay. We gotta stop protecting ourselves in some of this.
That's a good idea, because they can tell us upfront that what they're charging.
And we've, Reno's has hauled, started hauling wet sand up there. He hired Frank and some, a big truck of trailer trucks, and he's been, it's already been getting delivered to the sand shed. And he's hauling out of Whitefield. I'm basically letting haul a bunch of sand up there and trying to see what it's gonna cost to do stuff like that. Because some of those prices you guys got in are, it's going up every year. So we gotta find a way to control this. Because people saying, okay, I got away with this much last year, so this year we'll put in this much more. We can't have that much increase every year. We're gonna get in trouble.
When is the salt coming, do you know?
I probably will have Julie order some so I can mix that stuff that's coming in. So, you know, I, did you get a thing in the paper to get under a contract with one of the salt companies? Normally, they send us something early, and we sign up early to get the municipal price. It's a big savings.
I wasn't aware that we had to do anything. I thought it was all.
I mentioned it to Julie tomorrow. She'll know.
Julie's usually on top of that, and reminds us that we don't lose out that all.
Yeah, yeah, because I mean, that's a big savings.
It might be a, is that an annual contract or is it a?
It's a yearly thing, because they never know who's gonna get the contract. You got like three people up in port.
Right, it's not necessary.
And then they put that out to bid after for all the clients.
I don't think it's something that we have to take action on necessarily.
Yes, we have. We have to sign up for it.
We have to opt in, but we don't actually do the bid over.
No, but I forget it's not.
No, we have to, we have to sign up for it.
Time is coming when we're gonna need it.
Yeah. You wouldn't have known it last night, but.
It's seven in the morning.
Julie wanted to make sure you understood her notes for the bottom line figure.
Well, I had missed the HSE help me.
Okay, good.
You know, it's all filed up.
Yeah, we got all kinds of money.
I think you're okay for what you wanna do.
Yes, well, I wanna make sure. We're still picking away at all, all the smaller projects. I promise you guys, next year's budget would be a lot better of getting things done right. You know, as far as, I see a lot more how we're gonna have the budget I got. But we gotta get some more hot top, so we're gonna plan on sections. And then I wanna get the town on a ten-year plan. Every ten years, the road, that road is gonna get done. Unless there's an emergency in between that ten years, so we need to get the town up to card up to dig.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, a good rotation.
And we're not doing real bad. I mean, we got the safety crossroad down, we got down here the Fosse Point Road, because we're gonna come back again next year, we'll be in the budget. And then we got Sabino and Bridge Point, and we don't have a whole lot of roads. And then probably a couple years after that, we'll be hitting here, we'll be, we'll be on that ten-year.
I received some email correspondence from Ann Childs, who lives on Sugar Hill Lane. She was hoping to piggyback some work on their property, on the Sabino project. So she took some pictures. I just wanna make sure you have those pictures.
Now, she's not the one we have to ease myself. She doesn't own that.
Well, I can't tell from the assessor's notes, this person didn't come up when I looked at the page.
Well, what she said, that person is the, you go up past there, you go around this corner. There's a red house right there. It's water about five years ago. She was planning, she owns a five-acre strip.
Okay.
All the way to.
And Ann did mention that, that there was somebody else.
Right, and I believe that we're gonna be on that lady's land.
Okay, a five-acre strip.
As far as piggyback and work for her and with that, I think that's something she would have to hold the one to bid.
Yeah.
Because that's what.
And I wanna make sure, I want you to look at it, make sure that it's really her responsibility rather than ours. Because I'm not, I'm not sure from looking at the pictures where.
I know exactly where this is, okay? This is where the culvert got dammed up with the beavers this year, and we took it out. And it's actually a rodent on the side of the culvert. The water started going on the side.
Okay.
And, and, and that's the lady in the culvert that feeds the swamp. We're having problems. So I guess, I, you know, it's her driveway that she put across there, but it's not her fault the beavers plugged it up. It ain't the town's fault we plugged it up. Well, I don't know.
This could potentially, if we're not careful, this could potentially turn into another fiasco like Kim Murphy.
Right, so if she's willing to piggyback and, and not throw a big deal at her.
Yeah, she just wants to make sure it gets done somehow, and she's not sure how to approach it.
Well, basically, she needs a new culvert put in, and it needs to be chinked in and then paid back over, because she hasn't paid back one. So it's, I'd say it's probably looking at a five-thousand-dollar job. So I, and I don't think you're gonna save any, but putting it up was wrong. I mean, that's just something else that's gonna, so the only thing I could say that we could piggyback was whatever contractor gets the job, talk to her, talk to them. Is that why it is?
You can keep it if you'd like.
But yeah, she does have a problem. I noticed that when I was down with the, to get the beavers out there. That's basically where the beavers were living. I mean, it's, they didn't look great up there. But it seems good. The guy did a good job that we hired. And I haven't seen her, seen any beaver troubles.
Except in Bridge Point Road.
You said that.
Yeah, I think that's what, I think that's a.
Nying on, they changed their diet. They've been nying on the hot dog.
Yeah, that's basically all I got for you. As you say, we kicked away all these projects that we have on the list in next month. And I'll go down to Sandy Hill Road, so we set some time down to work in this town for a while.
Well, good. Be good to have you back at work for us. Yeah, there's just, you've got, had a lot of stuff done, and it's good, good to see it.
And I think, and I think Crook did an outstanding job on the Fosse Point Road. He was really trying on pretzels, and he did a good job doing it. He really did a nice job. He didn't leave any, he didn't break any rocks with the scrape by trying to make it thin, so he went and shredded everything out, and then he put an inch over the whole thing. So nothing's gonna come out, or get ripped out. And then we put that next layer over. It's just one inch and go.
Okay, we ready for LEDs?
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. That would like, very important.
You guys have a good evening. Thanks. You want to put that, you got any power lock?
No.
I'll get it here sometime.
What's new on the LEDs?
Let me get to that section. Emily sent over a couple of invoices from Revision, one that we had paid already, and one that is in this week's warrant. With those two invoices, it appears that the school is paid out. So based on the figures of those two invoices, the school owes the town a fifteen-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars, and she's gonna send us a check for that amount. So there was a, I had a misinterpretation of the previous documents. I wasn't understanding what they were putting forward for a final cost, and that's where the confusion came in.
Okay.
So I think we're all set. And then moving forward with the grant with Nature Conservancy, a grant became available for possibly the town office work. They'll fund up to seventy-five percent of the cost of the project. And I wanna make sure that it's all right with the three of you to move forward with the plan that would switch out our fixtures and include dinner, dimmers.
Dinner?
Dinner. Dinner would be a chill, but dimmers. It will involve the ceiling patching, so I just wanted to make sure that that was okay before we move forward. David Webb needs a very specific plan so that he can come up with the necessary documents to provide the nature conservancy.
He has to re, essentially reapply.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think it's a, it's a good move to, to reapply and see if we can save rent money.
I have to say, I have new LED lights in my kitchen. I love them. I can see. Do we need a motion to authorize you to do this?
Yeah, I think so. To apply for the grant anyway.
I move to authorize the application for the grant for an LED project for the town office. Something? Any further discussion? All in favor?
It's free money. We don't spend some bills or.
Thank you.
It's only for towns with a population under four thousand, so it's pretty small.
Oh, it's a small pool?
Small pool.
Good. And there are bonus points for applying early. Ah, good chance. So will.
Kind of like the Wheel of Fortune, yeah.
That's cool. Don't they have the Wheel of Fortune they play here?
Little games we play with back there, don't they?
Let's see, comprehensive planning process. What's happening with that, Christine?
We have a smallish core group of people who have been involved, attending meetings, and, you know, taking on some of the pieces of the puzzle to gain information and follow along. I think it might be wise with some of the non-attendance and resignations that we go with the smaller group of people, even if it's as small as a group of three. And then on different portions of the comprehensive plan to call in other people, maybe from the planning board or from the marine resources committee, to help out with those sections. I think it might prove more productive than what we're trying to do now.
It started out as a fairly large committee.
Yeah, and lives are very busy, and people have had to resign for various reasons. There are a few active people, and I would like to make sure that they still stay engaged. But I just wanted to at least put it out there and talk about it, and make sure that you know where we're at in the process right now. If there's a certain way that you want the comprehensive plan, if you want it approached in a certain way, that would be helpful information to have for the committee members too.
When, when is their next meeting?
They don't have one scheduled.
I know. We canceled the last one due to lack of quorum. And it just seems that the way it's been going has not been working. It's obviously a massive project.
Future meetings, maybe you should set them up as a workshop rather than a regular committee meeting, so you don't have to deal with quorum issues.
But it's still not productive. The people aren't putting in the work. And that's, as someone that's involved with it, it's extremely frustrating.
Have, have they reached out to the state gentleman, again, Kittery?
Yeah.
To come down and try to.
He did come down at the very beginning and talk about them.
We can do it again. That might not be a bad idea.
Getting back here, the only advice I would give is not to try to reinvent the whole thing.
Right.
A lot does not change. Keep it as simple as you can.
Yeah, and follow the state guidelines as closely as you.
I think it was John carries this guy's name, it lives in Brunswick, but he's mentioned to me that it would be a simpler approach rather than redoing the whole thing. And I think that's what should be accomplished, is to keep it as simple as you can.
And the people who are interested in working on it, I think, should keep working on it?
Yeah, see, what, what we initially tried to do is break it into sections and have certain people work on specific sections. I'm not sure that will work for our purposes. I think possibly just having a core group go through every piece of it together just to read through it and say. and say, "Okay, maybe we keep this, we keep this the same, looks good, let's move on," um, whatever it might be.
Right.
But just have everybody walk through it together, and then we need the specific, um, technical experience that they know that they can call on somebody else to talk about.
I believe in one conversation I had with Mr. Kerry, that he would review our current, our current plan and see what areas he thought needed to be redone, and disregard the other stuff that was still, you know, was fine. So I think we should talk with him, see if we reviewed it, not ask him to, and get back to this group.
That's a good idea, kind of a reboot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And simplify the process as far as possible.
And that's what he was gonna do.
Yeah.
Or help to do.
And then, um, Carly, can you be in touch with the active people and see when we could have just a...
Both of them here.
If we could have just a, um, a, a workshop meeting, just so we could see where things are, you know? Because I'm, I'll touch with this process, and I'd like to be caught back up and see if we can...
I don't think you can miss very much.
Someone should contact Mr. Kerry, because it may take a little while to review the plan.
Well, I know he was in contact with the chair for a while, actually.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's get that moving. It's something that has to be finished, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we're required by statutes to do it.
Right.
Okay, um, considering the lateness of the hour, shall we table the, uh, committee procedures policy?
Yeah.
All right, let's, uh, let's table that. Is that acceptable to you as well? Okay. So done. Um, meeting schedule.
You can table that as well if you like, if you wanna check your calendars, I'm not sure if you have that much here. Or just, um, choose the October meetings. We already have the seventh, which is the first Monday.
Right.
And then, I know, Madeline, you have a conflict on the third Monday.
Um, I would have a conflict on the third Monday, any, any third Monday.
So...
So if we go for the seventh and the twenty-eighth, that, that would also, that would work for me, I'd be back on the... So... And then, um, in November, we have the, uh, the regular scheduled meeting would be on, um, that Wednesday.
Why don't go on the twelfth?
Is that in conflict with a, um, another one of the...
Yeah, the planning board's on the twelfth.
All right, um, take, come in on the, the eighteenth, and just have one meeting in the month of November because of Thanksgiving.
And then we, yeah, we run into Thanksgiving.
Probably do the same in December too, because there's nothing going on.
If we, um, and if we, if something comes up that we absolutely need to deal with, then we can call a special meeting.
Yeah, so I would say the eighteenth in November, and probably sixteenth in December.
Um, uh, I, I would hate to need, to miss two of the meetings in a row.
Mark, can you do the second and the sixteenth, I don't think that's two.
The second and the sixteenth in December we could do.
Okay.
Yeah, because I can miss one meeting.
Yeah, because Christmas week is a bust.
Yeah, nobody, nobody wants to do anything except have Christmas.
Carly wants to go with trees.
She'd have it all planned, if she waits till the time of things. Beyond a, yeah, the second and the sixteenth.
And if there's nothing there, maybe we can cancel if there's no items to be addressed on the sixteenth.
That's a good idea.
Just committed a sign of warrant.
Yeah, if there's nothing going on, or...
Wouldn't it be nice if there was nothing going on?
Nothing, yeah, it's a... A quick point.
Yes. Um, so let's, um, let's plan unless there's something else happening, um, to deal with the, the, uh, committee procedures. I think that's mostly just having a review of the review and then adopting. Okay, do we have any other other?
I have a tiny other, just for Kathy, um, since Sheila had to leave the last meeting. This document requires three signatures, it's, it allows one member of the board of selectmen to sign a waiver warrants. And we have to do these on an annual basis, so I just wanna make sure that we have one in the file. No deviation from our normal practice. Thank you.
Okay, now, acting in the capacity of the Board of Assessors, we have, um...
They're gonna change hats now.
Um, we have some other business to accomplish. Uh, abatement for, um, Benton and Idabel and the city of Bath. Do we have an explanation of these?
Yeah, it's on the abatement, um, Ron put it on the front page of the abatement. For Beal, it's, the homestead exemption was left off because the year of the homestead was read incorrectly.
Okay.
So that will allow them to receive their homestead exemption.
Excellent.
And the one for the city of Bath, um, it was owned by the city of Bath under the tree growth program and was sold to, oh, wait a minute. Yeah, it was sold to RSU One without paying for the tree growth penalty before it was conveyed to the city of Bath.
So it's just an abatement of fifty-five, sixty-five?
Yeah.
All right, moving. Grant to both the vehicles.
My second grab.
So there is a place to sign on both the front and the top of the second page, each of it now.
What benefit on that? All in favor? Keep it easy. Is there an other, um, for the, us, us, acting as assessors? There were the only two. Okay. Once we sign, we can adjourn, I think. There you go.
We're gonna have to do it back after all.
I forgot to sign the other page. I'll keep it back to myself, because I, I just... Here. That paper said, "This is cooperation." Next page. Oh, thank you. Short term. Is there any other business? Shall we adjourn?
Yes.
Yes. Say goodbye, standing up.